Sorry, I didn't bring you up here.
Good evening and welcome to the regular board meeting of the Village of Webster, Tuscany, on Tuesday, November 21st. And if you would please, if you would stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ladies seated. This evening we are going to begin with the honoring of a institution here in the Village of Webster.[73.92][73.92](laughter) A young lady who has contributed many, many years and just has made the village, I think, a lot of what it is today with the folk news and the happenings around town and all that has gone into it. So without further ado, I would like to read to you a proclamation from the village. Would you like to sit or would you like to?
I'll do whatever you say. I'll stand.[113.14][113.14](laughter)
Board, if you would join me, please.[116.81][116.81](laughter)
I may be a monument, but I still have to.[120.14][120.14](laughter)
The Village of Webster would like to make this proclamation. Whereas Carol Clem was born in Rochester and moved to a family-built home in Webster as a young adult and has lived in Webster ever since. And whereas much of her professional life has been following her passion for the Webster community by working as a journalist for both the Webster Post and the Webster Herald. And whereas Carol recognized the historic beauty and zealous spirit of the Village of Webster to be an amazing place to live, work, and visit. And whereas so began a 12-year endeavor writing the Village Focus article for the Webster Herald and the village website that highlighted the special people, places, and activities that give the village its bountiful culture. And whereas her articles helped to support local organizations and businesses, old and new, and to promote community events all year long. And whereas her journalistic expertise has ultimately strengthened the village and everything it stands for as a close-knit, supportive, and fun community by bringing people together. Therefore, let it be known and resolved that we, myself, Mayor Daryl Burns, and the village board, on behalf of the Village of Webster, do hereby recognize and applaud the good works of Carol Clem and extend heartfelt appreciation for her dedication to supporting the village community. In witness whereof, we declare November 21st, 2017, that's today, Carol Clem Day in the Village of Webster, who faces out there.[240.45][240.45](applause) Please.[266.58][266.58](laughter)
Oh, this is marvelous.[271.64][271.64](laughter) It's amazing. It's real.[276.02][276.02](laughter) They really get this good, do they?
Isn't that beautiful?
This is a beauty. I'm impressed. I'm thinking this somewhere very special. I'll build a room.[288.33][288.33](laughter) This is great.
Now, if you would remain here.
Yes.
If there's anyone in the audience who would like to come up and talk or make a presentation.
Robin could do so.
Robin.
Oh, Robin.[304.38][304.38](laughter) I always do a resume.
So I don't have quite as many words as Daryl did, whereas, but Carol has always been an extreme supporter of our Business Improvement District. So we can do a lot of her fun, entertaining stories about what we've had coming up. So we created something specific for you. So this is a certificate of appreciation that certifies that Carol Clem is the first recipient of the Webster Business Improvement District's Supporter Extraordinaire Award.[344.81][344.81](laughter)[345.81][345.81](applause)
However, I expect to go into museum.[360.02][360.02](laughter) That would be awesome. Yeah. Absolutely. Here we have our kids. This is Robin.
Thank you. There's someone with no name. Paul and Mike and...
Oh.[384.12][384.12](applause) I'm maid queen. I'm not. I'm maid queen. Don't ever win.[389.12][389.12](laughter)
You guys are my family. All your friends, the little burgers, and the pup. I want to thank you for all your kind words over the years. You always been positive, which is hard to find these days.
Not for me.
Well, I know. It was appreciated.
Honey, thank you. Really, you know how I feel. Can't say enough.
You know, just keep on expressing the good work, Carol.
Think I can?
I think you can.
I think table that, right?
Thank you.
Yeah.[407.12][407.12](applause) We don't see too much Davey on the publisher in here.
I know. I stay under the radar. But I'm honored.
This is a special occasion.
All right, girl. And I want to sincerely thank Carol for everything that she has done to improve our publication and to get the word out about the Village of Webster, which is very important to us. Carol, thank you so much.
Oh, David. Are you kidding me?[438.12][438.12](laughter)[439.12][439.12](applause) Oh, my goodness.
I'm representing the Webster Museum.
Oh, I'm curious.
As seen on the mug.
Oh. My second mug. Is this right? I hear the mug is so clear. I love them. Honey.
This is Sharon Kraft. Sharon Kraft.
She's wonderful. Pardon.[465.12][465.12](laughter) Okay. Oh, Dorothy. She's amazing. One of my favorite village clerks.[472.12][472.12](laughter)
It's wonderful to be back in Webster, where life is worth living. And Carol Clem did write the best articles that are in all my mindbooks. My daughter has an article for every phase of her becoming a daughter.
Yes, I remember.
And I've never met a lady more like you.
Oh.
And I wish I got a chance to kiss her.
Oh.
Thank you, Dorothy. It's so sweet.[504.12][504.12](applause)
I think they're gonna do it.[506.12][506.12](laughter) I will just say quickly, I'm overwhelmed. You do know, I thought, this is so embarrassing.[516.12][516.12](laughter) I don't really want this, but I'm overwhelmed and redlined. And I'd like to thank everybody who arrived. I can't believe it. And I hope I can keep doing something for a while and not just take three naps a day.[536.12][536.12](laughter) So anyways, thank you so much for coming and to Daryl and to board and Jude, who orchestrated a great deal of this, I'm sure.
It is now 7:57 and I would like to re-convene going forward, meaning.
You gotta kick her out.
At this point in time, we would like to have a presentation, Laura Landers from the Reed Max, is here to discuss our annual update document, an audit report relative to the fiscal year that ended May 31st, 2017. Anybody else would like to listen to the report, welcome to stay.
That'll get them out.[736.12][736.12](laughter)
Laura, you have a microphone. You can stay right there.
Yes, Mayor said that.
Check, one, two.
I'm here to present the audit for the village, uh, the 2017. Our audit, we issued an unmodified opinion again this year on the village's financial statements, which basically means that the financial statements that you have in front of you materially represent the financial position and the operations of the village as of May 31st, 2017. The pages three and four are what we call the government-wide financial statements. These incorporate all of the assets and liabilities of the village. And you'll notice that different from last year to this year is that, again, there is a business-type activity on the financial statements, and this relates to the newly-established sewer fund that began as of June 1st of 2016. And we'll go over that in detail. There'll be separate financial statements for the sewer fund that are contained in here. But I'd like to go to the general fund on page five, which is the main operating fund of the village. The general fund ended the year with a total fund balance of $1,861,741. $1,384,117 of that amount is what we call unassigned. And that's the amount that you, as the board, can utilize for whatever purpose you so choose to utilize that for. In addition, there are some restricted amounts, and the total amount of that is $475,000. The majority of that is for capital reserves, capital projects reserves. The operations of the general fund, page six. The general fund ended the year with a surplus of a little over $322,000 before a transfer out to the capital projects fund to help fund a project there. And also, there was a small transfer in the amount of $14,100 to the sewer fund during the current year. So after transfers out of $131,017, the general fund surplus was a little over $191,000. On page eight is the, begins the financial statements for the newly-established sewer fund. As you see there, this looks very similar to a business-type, and that's why it's called a business-type activity, but looks very similar to what you would see commercial-type financial statements with the assets and non-current assets, which we, you know, with Chris's assistance identified those assets that the village was carrying within their governmental fund, governmental funds, and transferred those assets over to the newly-established sewer fund. And also liabilities related to the serial bonds payable and compensated absences and the net pension liabilities. Those were all transferred over as of June 1st of 2016. As you can see, the net position, the largest portion of that net position relates to the net investment in capital assets of the sewer fund. That is the total capital assets, net of depreciation, less outstanding debt that is carried within the sewer fund. That leaves an unrestricted deficit in the current year of $460,000 for the deficit of the current year. The next statement is a statement of revenues, expenses, and changes in net position. This is, you would call, the income statement. Total operating revenues, $684,000. Operating expenses, which include depreciation of close to $100,000, is $857,000, leaving an operating loss of $173,000. However, you do have the special assessment, which is under non-operating revenues, $115,000. So total non-operating revenues were $82,608. And the loss before transfers and the special item, which is the transfer of all of those assets and liabilities into the sewer fund, was $90,829. And the total change in net position at the end was $72,796. Page 10 is cash flow statement for the sewer fund. The sewer fund had net cash used by operating activities, about $141,000. So pretty much a break-even for the first year of operations for cash that's being generated by the operations. And then you have the special assessment, which is non-capital financing activities, basically the special assessments, and then cash flows from capital and related financing activities, which is a use of cash of a little over $61,000. Brings us down to net increase in cash of $54,067. As far as the notes to the financial statements, note one is the summary of significant accounting policies. There were no significant changes in the accounting policies for the village from the prior year. No significant standards that were implemented in the current year that required any additional disclosures in here in the summary of significant accounting policies. Note two details all of the notes related to various activities and funds of the village, deposits and investments, the capital assets that are carried in the governmental activities, which would be the general fund, and the business-type activities, which would be the sewer fund. The pension obligations, and this was a standard that was implemented in the prior year, Gatsby's Statement Number 68, related to the net pension liabilities. And those liabilities have decreased across the board for all participants in the ERS, Employees Retirement System, because the measurement date of that is March 31st, 2017, which is the state's fiscal year and which is also the retirement's fiscal year-end. And the stock market had a very good year from April 1st of 2016 to March 31st of 2017. So the fair value of those assets, when they measured that at March 31st, 2017, it increased significantly from the March 31st, 2016 date, which basically leaves the ERS system funded at the level of 94.7%. So that was an improvement. And that liability for the general fund is recorded in the government-wide financial statements, doesn't affect the general fund fund balance. The sewer fund, that liability is recorded within that, those financial statements as a business-type activity. Other post-employment benefits and the long-term liabilities and net position and fund balance note that starts on page 27, details out what the calculation that I gave you for the net investment in capital assets. And also on page 28, the detail of the fund balances and the general fund, what those restricted amounts are for debt, equipment, and the North Avenue Connector project. The last section is the required supplementary information, and this is required by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. Two of these statements relate to the pensions and the pension liabilities and presenting three years and four years of information. Eventually, the chart on page 33 will be filled out once we get to 10 years, and then they'll be rolling off. And then on page 34 and 35 is the budgetary comparison schedule for the general fund and the notes to the budgetary comparison schedule. We also have a management report, which is the separate report to you as the governing board of the village and our required communications to you as the board. Also included in there are the summary of significant accounting estimates that are included within these financial statements and recently issued accounting standards. The next one that will have some kind of impact on the village is Gatsby's Statement Number 75, which deals with the other post-employment benefits, and that will be effective May 31st of 2019. We had no significant efficiencies or material weaknesses to report as a result of our audit. We had one other matter and an operational matter, and the operational matter really relates to cybersecurity, which we're including in all of our management reports this year, just so that the board is aware that if you haven't, you know, turned on the TV or opened a newspaper or turned on the radio, that, you know, cybersecurity is an important thing related to, you know, the operations of the village and for any entity that is using the internet and, you know, as technology increases, we're going to be using that more and more, so it becomes even more important related to the security of your IT infrastructure. I'd like to thank Chris, you know, for all of her assistance and in having to dig through information in order to ensure that we had the accurate numbers for the establishment of the sewer fund, for the assets, the liabilities, and splitting all of that information out in order to be able to present the sewer fund as a separate standalone business-type activity. Page nine. And as you look through these financial statements, feel, you know, please feel free to contact me with any questions that you may have regarding the financial statements.
Laura, page 11. In this document, you are other matters and operational matters. The review of payroll registers?
Yes.
So that report which is received from, coming back from paychecks?
Yes.
Should be looked at in comparison to what went to them?
Right.
Or would you have a comparison between what comes back and what was sent to them?
What was sent to them and what is coming back to them, or coming back to the village, yes. I think, Mayor, that would be something that would be very similar, that if payroll was being processed in-house, you would want to make sure, ensure that the information that was put into the payroll system and you'd be reviewing the payroll reports that are being generated from the system. So similar type of review.
Any questions? May I have a quick read?
Yeah, there may be some that we could look through. So if there are one, they can contact you.
I'll forward to each of you Laura's email address and phone number so you have it handy.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you, Mayor, for all your hard work.
Thank you, Christina. Well.
Feel free to stay.
You don't have a meaning to go to. I was just hoping that all those people would stay and want to hear what you're listening to.
No, I hope not. All right. At this point, we would like to open up the microphone for public comments. If anybody would like to address the seat this evening, welcome to do so. Come up, put your name.
Walter.
Richard Walden, Webster Citizens Action League. There's two things tonight that I'd like to speak on. One is I know in the past this reports of the auditors have been put on
Get to look out in the afternoon and see the progression. Anybody else? And if those in the audience do not stay for the whole time, a very pleasant Thanksgiving, hand, raise your right. Heather, repeat after me, please. pursuant to the New York State Constitution, Article 13, Section 1, the oath of office happy and thankful Thanksgiving to all of you as well. reads as follows. All right, we will move now into Village Board Business, and the first thing I would I, Heather Halstead, do solemnly swear.
I, Heather Halstead, do solemnly swear.
like to do is put my coat back on again, and ask Heather to come up. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of village clerk.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of office clerk.
According to the statute of my authority.
According to the statute of my authority.
To help me guide.
To help me guide.
Congratulations.
meeting of November 9th. If you had a chance to look them over, I hope that you have. Are there any additions, corrections?
I did not have any.
I do not have any either, so I entertain a motion to accept the minutes as written.
Make that motion.
I'll second it.
Trustee Lancey?
Aye.
Trustee Ibelito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item number two, resolution to approve the claims and warrants. I believe Al and Carl looked at them this week. I have looked them over, although I don't have a lot of questions. Carl, did you find anything you?
The only thing that I questioned was the $6,83 service charge on every single thing from Synthes.
Yes, that's actually, if I may answer, we're actually looking into that, because the charge should only be a dollar. Currently, I reviewed all the invoices from January, from October 1st through now, and the last two bills haven't been analyzed yet, but through the middle of October, they owe us $90, and I've already sent that to Synthes, and they're calculating to see if my calculations were correct.
Good.
Based on Jake's observation that they weren't charging us properly. I was more concerned about the mats, and made sure, and then he got the rest of it, so it was a concerted effort.
So, is it $6,83 or $1?
$1.
Okay.
Now, is that, is that what is charged to the guys, or is that for?
No, it's a village charge.
The village charge.
So, you're not going to pay that bill until it's resolved?
No, we actually did pay all the bills, because I will stay on top of them to make sure that they issue us the credit based on what they tell us. But we didn't want to hold it up, because we didn't want to hold up service. And they, they're, they've been out there for a while, so, you know, what do they do? It's going to do, run away. We didn't want to hold up their bills.
How far back does that go?
The analysis, and the amount of money that we are owed back, since the new contract started September 28th, that's when it went back to.
Jake, salt-bon roof repair. What happened with that? Do we have a tree down on it, or?
No, I believe that, it's a salt-bon roof repair, the house. You know, the DPW, we had to issue and had to get around one of the drains, and had to get some ceilings. What page is that on?
I'm sorry, that's on page 6, down at the bottom.
2041? Oh, it's pole barn roof repair. That's pole barn at the sewer treatment plant, where we had the things that blew off, there's some panels that blew off, and those were repaired, that big, the big pole barn.
Anything else?
I don't know. I want to take a motion back.
One second. If it was, is that getting paid out of the sewer fund then, and not the general fund, since it was down in the sewer treatment plant?
That's correct.
Okay.
Is it there?
I don't have it in front of me, so.
It's part of the sewer fund.
All right, it's in the list for the sewer fund?
Yeah. And there was a PO for it.
What was the slack chemical? We, annual chlorine, looks like we've had quite a bit of credit to that.
Because every time they submit, they, those barrels are worth 800 bucks apiece, so when they return, when they do the swap out of the chlorine, then they credit us $800 per barrel. So, that's why there's those big credits. And that's why all those invoices are included now, because for a while, we were carrying a credit. You can't send a check that's a negative dollar amount, so that's why there's like six invoices in there together at one time.
I'm taking a motion to approve and pay the claim.
I make that one.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lancey?
Aye.
Trustee Ibelito?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Then item three, we're looking at a resolution here to pay Josette Amolphy severance pay through November 30th, 2017, in the amount of $3,130.57, and that would be in addition to her unused vacation pay, which is in the amount of $2,236.12. That would total $5,366.69 to repay December 1. And I want to take a motion to pay Josette the severance pay and unused vacation in the amount of $5,366.69.
I'll make that motion.
One second.
Trustee Lancey?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Ibelito?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
The next item is, maybe put the letter up there, the resolution for authorization of Heather Halstead to sign the letter of appointment of Peter Bertucci on behalf of Paychex Insurance Agency to be our exclusive insurance broker with respect to our Medicare Advantage Health Insurance Plan. And the next, the next, whoop, it's not in there. It is a letter, and it simply confirms that as of December 1st, we will have appointed Peter Bertucci on behalf of Paychex, our exclusive insurance broker with respect to the Medicare Advantage Health Insurance Plan. And a motion to accept that?
I'll make it. I'll second it.
Trustee Ibelito?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Lancey?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, we have a resolution to hire a consultant to assist in the training of the village clerk. This would be at $20 an hour, and would not be, not exceed a total of $120. The assistant in training, consultant to training the village clerk, I think, would be beneficial, so I'd bring that to your consideration.
I think it's a really good idea. And a favor.
Then may I have a motion to hire a assistant?
Assistant. I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
Thank you.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Trustee Ibelito?
Aye.
Trustee Lancey?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Before we move to item six, I'm going to rearrange that, and I'm going to introduce item seven, if you would allow me to do that. Reason why I would like to do this is, we just had the honor of thanking Carol Clem for all that she has done on behalf of the village, in terms of writing the articles for the Village Focus, and through the years, just, you know, keeping, keeping all those newsy things in front of the public, and the events that go on and all of that, and I just, I'm overwhelmed by the support and the love that was here, the joy that was here in celebration of those years. And the village would, the trustees would really like to continue with the village something. We're not sure exactly what it may be called in the future, but that is something that is to be seen. But we do have a young lady who has expressed an interest in continuing as a successor in the footsteps of Carol, although I think she will make this her own as she progresses and moves forward, and that is Erin Rosenberg, who has expressed a desire to write biweekly articles, also possibly to have a blog, which would appear also on our website, and photographs, I believe, as well, and I think she does have an ear to the community, and so I'm excited about that, and excited that she has expressed an interest in doing so.
And make her stand.
You'd make her stand. All of you have possibly seen the, heard of the, resume, I guess you'd say, that's come to him, and I would like to, at this point, ask for a motion to, in this case, we will be hiring, as we hired Carol Clem and paid her for articles, Erin Rosenberg and paid her $250 a month for her articles on a biweekly basis, and if there is no...
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
If there's no comment, the motion is there.
Trustee Ibelito?
Aye.
Trustee Lancey?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Erin, we definitely look forward to, something that I think you should think about in terms of a title, you know, Village Focus, you want to take a new direction, it becomes yours, but it should have village, and whatever else you want to do. And we look forward to it, and you have a great opportunity here at Christmas with our things coming up, White Christmas, and Santa coming to town in mourning, and I know those things a little bit later on, but just a great opportunity if you would like to get a start. So, I'd like to meet with you sometime next week, after Thanksgiving. You can come in, and we'll meet with Heather, and we'll go through what we need to, in terms of getting you up and running.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you again.
Look forward to it. Thank you. Okay, item number, now second. A discussion on the structural organizational chart. You have it in your packet, and it's one that has, this one that we have is dated June 9th, 2015. There was one somewhat similar to this, which was 2014. We have one that is in place today. I do not see that, but it is slightly different. So, what we would like to do, is we would like to revisit the organization, the organizational structure, and look at it across the board. I mean, we can look at it the whole way, from one end to the other, and maybe come up with some ideas, some new direction possibly as well. So, this is something that we've had some degree of thought, I think, in the past about, and I know that there has been an evolution of this chart over the last few years, so I think that we need to take a look at it in the days of it. Any thoughts on your part as to whether or not we should do that?
I do have some thoughts. I think I would, I would like, just the past few years with the office and the direction and communications from all different angles, whether it's the clerk, to the mayor, whatever, I feel we do this size of this office and stuff, I think there should be a leader of the office, as we talked about in the past, and in my opinion, the physicians holding the office would all report to the clerk, and then the clerk is the one that would directly communicate to you for things you need, instead of getting emails and questions and things from all different people that may be, you know, overstepping one person to send something to the mayor, vice versa. I just think it brings it all together in a cohesive way, where, you know, everyone's going to a person, and you're not getting responses from multiple people, you're, you would be dealing with the clerk.
That's the way it works sometimes.
I don't know how it wasn't possible.
Normally, the clerk is the one that manages the office, whether it's a local attorney.
Well, I know, I know Pittsburgh Village is similar to that, I haven't done too much research on it. I can't see how it would really be successful on any other.
Well, it's a small office.
Yeah, you have to have an office.
Well, I think we've seen fragmentation over the last couple of years.
Just putting it together what was there before.
Yeah.
Well, then, I would like to...
And then there's Jake's position. Labor operator, right?
What I would like, what I would like is, I'd like you to give some thoughts, provide some thoughts, take a look at this, maybe...
And then the clerk is the one that would directly communicate to you for things you need instead of getting emails and questions and things from all different people that may be, you know, overstepping one person to send something to the mayor or vice versa. I just think it brings it all together in a cohesive way where, you know, everyone's going to a person and you're not getting responses from multiple people. You're, you would be dealing with the clerk.
That's the way it works sometimes.
I don't know how it wasn't possible.
Normally, the clerk is the one that manages the office, whether it's in overture town.
Well, I, I know, I know Pittsburgh Village is similar to that. I haven't done too much research on it. I can't see how it would really be successful on any other level.
Well, it's a small office.
Yeah, you have to have an office.
Well, I think we've seen fragmentation over the last couple of years.
Just putting it together what was there before.
Yeah.
Well, then I would like to...
And then there's Jake's position. Labor operator, right?
What I would like, what I would like is, I'd like you to give some thoughts, provide some thoughts, take a look at this, maybe we'll decide and talk about how to structure it differently than what is here and revisit this in the future.
Yeah, quicker than, yeah, sooner than later.
We'll also take a look at what we have currently as well and maybe we can go back to what the organization was in twelve or thirteen. Take a look at the...
Believe me, Peter or Jake, the way we had set up with them.
All right, if there's no other items under general board business, let's move to attorney. Don?
I don't have anything at the moment.
Again, nothing.
It's usually a good thing when your attorney doesn't have anything. Things are going smooth.
That's true. All right. Office.
Financial statements?
Financial statements are in front of you. And I did have the opportunity to look it over. It's, there's nothing that is, I don't think listed because we're in eleven, period through ten thirty-one, but there is good news. We have an increase from the Monroe County sales tax. It is larger than it was last, last year this quarter. So that is a very good thing, even with all of the online buying, with sales tax revenue has increased a little bit. So this is, 'tis the season to be merry and allow you to show stores and shop to your heart's delight and it'll increase the sales tax next time as well. So that'll be great. I don't have any other particular, I don't have anything here to talk about at the moment. Well, you know. This was for a period ending on ten thirty-one. We will be coming up on a, the next one probably is it eleven thirty-one?
Eleven thirty.
Eleven thirty, okay. And then I think what we'll take a look at by the time we get to December, which will be, which will be halfway through the year, we'll take a look in January at where we are.
That's good.
So then I'm doing that, a little bit more doubt. All right, we have budget transfer.
I propose to move from the promotion Village Voice line, eight hundred dollars, to the economic development application line, eight hundred dollars, which is a new line created specifically for allowing to, for the restored New York application fee, which is five hundred dollars, as well as other fees associated with that application, which include publication fees. It could be higher than that, it could be lower, but at least eight hundred dollars most likely. Daily Record Publishing will cost about a hundred and sixty-five dollars and the Herald Publishing will be another thirty probably, so, and I don't know what other Miss Lady's charges that may be, that we'll go down the road with that.
The Village Voice, is that, did we go with the Record or the Village Voice for the three days?
The Record.
The Record. And I would let everybody know that we will be having a public hearing on the restored New York application and the list of properties that are included in it on Monday, December fourth. Let me take a look. Monday, December fourth, Village Board Public Hearing, that is Monday, and that'll be at seven o'clock. And Matt Chatfield will be making a presentation and answering any questions that you might have. This does refer to about forty-five thousand square feet of commercial business on the east end of Main Street. And we're looking for a grant and that would be about ninety cents on the dollar, I believe he's mentioned. So I think it's about a million dollars. So we do encourage you to come out, we have a public hearing on Monday, December fourth. We will be considering any voice that we hear and we will be voting on Tuesday, December fifth, on our workshop to move forward with this if, as we hear from the public, we hear agreement and we'll go from there, okay? So encourage you to come out for that meeting. So I would entertain a motion to move and transfer from line zero one zero six, sixty-four ten, four fourteen, Promotion Village Voice, to zero one zero six, sixty-four ninety-seven, four hundred, Economic Development Application.
I get it.
Eight hundred dollars.
Trustee Icolito?
Aye.
Trustee Lancy?
Aye.
Trustee Lauer?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Will?
Yes, sir.
From you on the block?
Yes, well, kind of.
Is that a good thing too?
I don't know. Yeah, I have nothing to report.
Okay.
You may answer. Just a couple of things. In the report, you got the run-of-the-mill violations and complaints and things that I've come across. Some of them don't even really make it here because they don't end up being real violations or complaints. I'll go and, at the request of a tenant, visit an apartment and do an inspection for them. Sometimes it works out to the tenant's advantage and sometimes it does not. But one thing I will mention is since the state's implementation of the new zombie property law, the banks seem to be moving a lot quicker, both with repair of violations and taking care of property maintenance issues, but also moving towards foreclosure and auctions or selling off the house and getting people to buy it so that they can actually move it into the market area. So I'm pleased with that. The other thing I'm finding is even though we've done it for a long time now, there still seems to be some question as to the requirement of roofing permits in the village and in the town and in a lot of municipalities. When a roof is being replaced, we do require a roofing permit. So I just want to put that out there to some people remember because it always seems to be such a big shock or surprise when I go up and pull up to a house that's having a roof done and I say, ah, you know, you need a roofing permit. I'm like, oh, we didn't know. So, no, you do. I see, the rumor is that one hundred South Avenue is up for auction, I believe. So, all right, well, we'll see some movement on that. I think there's also some movement on eighty-three Orchard. That's another one that's been sitting for a long, long time. I think that's...
Is that Orchard or Main Street?
Orchard.
It's such a small one that sits back.
Little bit, yeah. It's got the boarded up window and everything's up. One thing I am happy, in my drive-through, it was sixty-five Shrewan Avenue, the house that had got fired. I see windows in it now, so the guy's actually doing something. It's taken a while, but that's being fixed, so hopefully the neighbors will be happy soon. One last thing, maybe. I did issue a CMO today for a new pub behind Mozzaroni's. It's Plotty's hometown tavern. They have like a temporary sign out, but they're going to be getting new signs soon, but they finally got their CMO. It's a, for him, it's a new venture, so it's going to be, you know, touch and go for a while, but he seems excited and hopefully he'll do well. So, other than that, are there any questions?
Who's he on?
Plotskert is his last name and I'm trying to, I can't remember his first name. But that I remember because the name Plotty kind of like fits in there a little bit. The other thing I'll mention is we're coming up on the end of the year, so I encourage people to change the batteries in their smoke detectors or pick up the ten-year battery smoke detectors that are now required under state law.
And carbon monoxide.
And carbon monoxide.
And more.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Jake?
Just got a couple of, I said that for jury's manhood. We did get, I think it's been since, since we met last, we did get a new pickup truck delivered.
Sharp.
Yeah, so we said we were going to get the rip line and stripes and things on it. The old one will likely send to the auction and we'll hopefully get a surplus declaration and send it to the auction in, in May unless, unless we want to look at doing an online one before. The, we are still continuing, we've picked up. We obviously took yesterday up, so hope to back out there. The new snowflakes are going up. If you look on Main Street, the new Christmas decorations will give, be looking for a surplus declaration via the next meeting or something. Try to get rid of the old ones, we're sure the new ones fit and everything's good. Should have been, should have done those a little earlier, but we'd always save them and try to get them out next, you know, late summer or something too. Might have a better, might be a better time of the year to... The new, the wacker, the mini articulating loader was delivered yesterday and we sent away the little bot cat that we had for the sidewalks. So we, and if we now have possession of that, it was after the sidewalk were done, so we didn't get a chance to test it out yesterday, but we're going to be going around, that'll be going around on the sidewalks now too, some of the street trees that are close. We're going to make sure it's a little taller than the old ones. We're going to make sure that we're all, we normally do every fall go through and turban up. So we're waiting for that to get here, so we can, we do that. North Avenue Connector Project, we opened the bids today. Lou Engineers has the bids to review, but at this point, the apparent low bid was, with all the alternates included, was nine hundred and forty-nine thousand, three hundred dollars and fifty cents. Don't forget that, which was less than, less than we thought it was going to be. It represents about, I think, it was about fifty thousand dollars less than we were thinking. So we didn't have to remove any of the area, exercise any of those deed ups opportunities. So obviously it's, it's the lowest qualified bidder, so we're still getting qualified and making sure we have everything and even federal aid project, there's, it's interesting. It's very interesting what they, what they do. So we're going to, you know, make sure we're dotting our i's and cross our t's and getting that check for eight hundred and eleven grand and then get it, we're all done, so. But that, that's going along, I was happy to see those. I did send an email out, I respectfully requested it. It's on the edda for either the fourteenth or the twenty-eighth of December to consider awarding a contract that, you know, Lou is working on now and getting, you know, reviewing him and they'll have a recommendation. And if we get an award, the bid back and then say, well, do an award within forty-five days of the opening next January fifth. So I suspect it's probably the twenty-eighth is probably going to be the meeting where it's considered. But if the board decides to award, that would be the, the last opportunity before that forty-five day period. And finally, the streetlights. If you recall, we were talking about the streetlights. Oh, yeah, next tension. I made a startling discovery that when you look at RG&E's website and Public Service Commission and you click on the service class eighteen, which is for the streetlights, one of them has just what's sent in for a change. I was trying to figure out why it didn't have all the pages in there. And I was able to find the one, when we're looking into it a little more, that has all the pages and kind of goes through some of the special considerations and things. So looking at other things, there's other documents that I was able to find from Orange and Rattlin County that, the electric utility, it's kind of a how-to manual when you're considering it and looking through and the state had another thing they considered, you know, changing over to LEDs and things. So putting all those together, I was talking to, and the name escapes me right now, the, the engineering firm that specializes in some of these energy upgrades because of the W. All right, the engineering firm that I talked to, they were, and I've been working for about a month with them trying to figure, you know, what would the fee be to just look at this and tell us what it would be. You know, he wants me to give me the fee, which is great, but just give me an idea what we're talking about because I'm not going to want to waste anybody's time if he comes back with a crazy figure. That'll be inside my, look through the service class eighteen documents and the other information I had. Looks like the process and what we're following here is that we request RG&E or express interest in purchasing the streetlights. They've sent us back kind of their proposal. The next step would be to respond back to them in writing saying, all right, we're interested in pursuing this. And I want to check with Don, I don't think that binds us with anything because then we have, then we can negotiate at that point and says, you know, negotiate the, the price. And obviously, everybody has to negotiate a good pay, but I don't know if we say we're interested, if we have to ultimately come to a conclusion, if we can, part of the negotiation could say, never mind, we decided not to. If that's the case, I would like to send them a letter saying, you know, we're interested, get more information. I called them today again and talked, where it was in that documents, I found some of the special rule. They're to provide us, you know, upon request, to provide us access to the maps and things. And I said, that's one of the, I'm a visual person and I can't read your inventory. Frankly, I don't think they can read your inventory. I don't know who put it. It's a crazy, crazy document. So we're looking at that and trying to get a map. She's working on getting the map and we can tell where we have service disconnects, where there's different sets of lights, different runs for the, for the lights where we have to, you know, that was one of the big figures too, is trying to figure out where we have to put these. So all indications are that it's a good deal ultimately. I just want to make sure, and the financial part of it, I think, makes a lot of sense when you look at what was offered and how much we can save. I want to make sure we're here to serve and provide that service to the residents. I want to make sure that we've got a plan in place that, and we had a tree down on Maryville that was down for a day and a half before they, or a day, about a half, about a day before they came and de-energized it. I confirmed RG&E'd still come up and make it safe, de-energize it, and then we'd be responsible for running it back up. So that's one tree. Occasionally, we get those nasty things called A-storms. That could have a pretty devastating effect on the system and, you know, the financial impact. I did talk to the insurance company today, find out what kind of things could be covered, are those included? She got back to me, it's relatively inexpensive. In comparison, obviously, you have to give more details. Right now, we're covered about five thousand, I think she said, and it's four. If an airplane hits it, and we don't have any that tall, but if an airplane hits it, we're all right. If we get struck by lightning, we're all right. But if a car or a tree falls on it, we're not all right right now. But if we can, she said, just a slight modification to our existing policy of this, which according is under a thousand dollars. And that'd be something I think really good to look at because it's a big liability out there.
Yeah, that'd be a good trade-off.
Yeah, I'd like to be able to write back to them and say, yeah, you know, we're interested in pursuing this. Let's start getting them nitty-gritty and getting the details because, you know, we can, every time I ask a question, I get four more questions as an answer, you know, for myself. It opens up different thoughts and different, and I want to make sure at the end of the day that we'll be able to provide the service and respond when we need to respond. And it's not the, you know, the typical, you know, if there's a street light out, we want to be able to get to it in a timely manner, make sure we do it in a week and a half, you know, or a week, week and a half, make sure we get out there, ideally a couple of days. But the reality of the service level rate power, RG&E usually gets out there within a couple of weeks. But if there's a major thing, you know, if we have trees down, wires down, things like that, I want to be able to have a plan in place. And one of the options is working with RG&E and maintenance. So when it's a one-op, you pay for the repairs that are done, you're not paying, you're not buying insurance policy for every aspect of the system every month. You're just paying for what actually needs to get done. I talked to them about that. They don't do it themselves, they contract it out, so I'm calling them, you know, calling them to the place where they contracted it, so.
Good.
That's it.
Still fire.
Was it under nine minutes this time?
Actually, it was.
Was it good?
They've asked, they've asked them to reply right behind the end of the question. They've asked, they've asked them to reply right behind the end of November, so. I think this is letter of intent at least to move forward with gathering more information, covering.
And I started writing the example at about seven-thirty this morning and I think I'm still, I'm still good.
Eight-three?
No, no, I haven't got the third page yet. I haven't got the first paragraph done yet. But just all over the place today. It's kinda crazy, so. Basically, I'll send it out and let everybody look at it and make, you know, definitely let Dan review it, make sure I'm not sending anything really dumb in it. And then I'll send it on and maybe get the ball rolling, or at least, we did get that extension to the end of the month, that one I respect. We had to get something back to them, so.
I did look at, you know, eighty thousand or ninety thousand in budget a year for RG&E. But probably not the electricity, right? That's more just the maintenance aspect of things?
It is, and those are, and those are expected to go up. If I look at a regular bill, I looked at one today, it was from 2016. There was, I wanna say it was about six thousand dollars. I believe there's about five hundred dollars worth of electricity. That was from July, so it's not obviously the peak time of the year. But even if you double the electricity used for January, you're talking about a thousand. And the bill was six thousand dollars. It was five dollars and forty-nine cents or five dollars and nine cents per bulb, wooden bulb. So much per bulb. So much, you know, never a likely, so, you know, they basically, you, every few months, I'm assuming you buy a bulb just in case one of them's going out. You know, they're charging us for one. Now, you know, when we buy them, those figures aren't going away. They get transferred into another, another area. But I certainly wouldn't expect that it's gonna be as much as it is. One of the things I also questioned on in the price that they gave us, which we can't discuss for some reason right out, right yet, but include in net book value. I questioned them on that, how they figured that, because everything I see, you know, I know Baker Street and they got some new poles not that long ago. But the majority of the poles in the building and where the system is, if you're buying, I think of the original poles that went in the sixties and seventies. I don't think you can depreciate poles for fifty or sixty years. Looking at, I tried looking up the electric distribution systems, about twenty years, laying itself, I think it's a seven-year schedule, so. I imagine they've gotta be depreciated and not have a lot of book value left on them, so I'm asked for a little more detail, see how they're figuring those things. On my, it wasn't a, it didn't seem like it was a terrible cost, but, you know, there's also some liabilities that you, a lot of liabilities you're getting with this, so.
Have we investigated any of the other municipalities in terms of sharing or are we looking to contract?
I think we've, my ideal would be to share with the other municipalities as much as we can, but have a contract in place for emergencies. Because just like us, if we had something, a piece of equipment or the expertise of another municipality didn't have, be more than happy to share that with them whenever we can. But if we had an area-wide storm or an outage or something bad, we're gonna be taking care of our own first. And then, and then, and then helping somebody else, and that's, yeah, I wouldn't expect any different from anybody else. At least if we had something in place to look at, okay, what would these things be? You know, and then eventually look at the LED conversion. LED conversion, I think the true value of that, I think, you know, you get some, some energy savings. And if we're a six thousand dollar bill and the energy, the electricity's only five hundred, you know, we're gonna get about two hundred, two hundred and fifty dollars savings maybe on that portion of it. There's a lot longer payback for conversion LED from, on the big overhead ones. Clancy's been really working hard on those, the corn cob ones we're getting, we're trying to do Fuller as their test, with the corn cob ones. And convert those over and get that down, 'cause there's something easier to do that we can, if we can work with, you know, we're working with an electrician to try to get, there's a little bit of work that needs to be done in Dallas, why, if you have a disconnect in Dallas around there. We're right now trying to get that through nice survey grants so they can pay for a portion of that. But really, those bulbs are under fifty dollars a piece and only talking a dozen of them for Fuller Avenue, so. Might have to be working a lot if you're just doing that street and then looking at all the rest of the area like that, if everybody likes those.
I think we did mention the fact that there was one light on Duning, one on Fuller, one on Park, and one in front of Music Store. But the idea that we are looking at right now, because that's very difficult when you're driving on Duning and you see one light different, you know, two blocks away and you approach it, you're still looking at everything that's already there. And it's very hard to compare what's new as opposed to what's old, especially if you like what's old. But, so what we are thinking of doing is making Fuller from two-fifty to Duning, correct? Sort of a test street where we will do all of the lights that we have there. And we will encourage village residents to drive on Fuller and to take a look at it and then express their opinions to the board. One thing I do not wanna do is change the village and have an uproar that it's not what everybody wants. So we do need to have input. So what we decided to do was, at a point where hopefully we get the grant money that we can buy these relatively low costs, we will put them on the street from two-fifty to Duning on Fuller, and that will be a street that we'll encourage people to drive on and then provide, you know, response back to us, give us some feedback as to what they, what they think about it. The LED lights will be a considerable savings to the village. And so we are looking at what we can do and what is acceptable and what then is a good look for the village and also to save money. We'll let you know. You'll probably see it as you drive through, and we'll let you know within ample time. Anything else, Jake? Oh, yes.
Yeah, just one more thing.
Well.
Happy Thanksgiving.
I can look at those prints from RG&E to help you with the distribution, disconnect and all that stuff.
And I've asked them for a print. Our initial thought was, well, they, we might not be able to get you a map, but we might be able to tell you, and I'm like, service classification report and this number, it says you're.
I'll take a look at it when you get it.
Yeah, so, no, I appreciate that, yeah.
Seward?
Seward, the, one thing we've got here is authorization for, it was October last year, we authorized Dan to go to a basic laboratory class. Dan went through the basic operators course with me, I'll say, two thousand and eleven or twelve. And he's been kind of the guy when something needs somebody, it's Seward, he's very well-versed down there. We got authorization in October last year to have him go to this class. When the class was, it was in June, and by the time the class came, he was, when his wife were expecting him, second little girl, so he decided he liked the home to come to, so he was not going to go to the class at that time. And wisely wanted to put it off, so now the class is in this, or next week, with four through the eighth, I think it was a couple of weeks. So the class is already done and covered. It was just his travel expenses that we're, that was to follow, and we never, we never did that, so. Just looking for authorization first, travel and expenses not to exceed. And I think you have the info on how that number was come up with.
Yeah.
Have you, is this from, this from the federal?
Yes. The I.R.R. spell's a GSA rate and it's a fifty-one dollar a day and then it included their first and last day of travel. And actually, it'd be less than I went over with them today, 'cause the hotel room itself also has the continental breakfast included, so. Told me, you know, you don't get the breakfast place, but there's up to a certain amount for lunch and up to a certain amount for dinner and. And so, yeah, I just did that, and there's incidentals.
Now, this will allow him to supplement down at the sewer treatment plant?
Yes. Yeah, he does now, and it's just another, another step towards having some redundancy and having, getting him a little closer. He kind of logs his time when he's down at the plant, you know, and we have, you know, he's down there working, 'cause you need a certain amount of experience or, you know, if you're looking at an operator license. And even if he got his operator's license, but we're still fully staffed there, it'd be good to have, you know, have him here, and he's certainly very capable. That might argue, like he has the staff here. He's a great guy up here and everything he does, so.
Any comments? And I'll accept a motion to authorize the travel and related expenses for Dan Boil to attend the lab procedures course at Morse. Not to exceed seven hundred and forty-five dollars and fifty cents.
I'll make that.
I'll second it.
All right. That's not right. Took that right away from you.
Trustee Bower?
Aye.
Mayor Byers?
Aye.
Trustee Alito?
Aye.
Trustee Lanson?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Public announcements. We are fast approaching Santa coming to the village. On December second, we have Christmas in the village and a number of things happening. In the morning, from nine-thirty to eleven o'clock at the Harmony House, there is breakfast with Santa. So if you have young children or you just wanna go yourself, please, please come. Believe, is there a cost to that?
There is.
Like five dollars or something?
Yeah. It wasn't much.
More than very much at all, but it's going to, good part somewhere.
Twenty dollars for a family?
Pardon?
Twenty dollars for a family.
Twenty for the family. And then in the afternoon, from three-thirty to five-forty-five at Village Hall, Santa will be there. And you can come and tell him what you would like to have for Christmas. He has a willing ear. And finally, at six o'clock, there will be the electric parade going down on East Main Street, running through to West Main Street. And that will start at six o'clock. I believe that we had a very, very good evening on Thursday. From what I heard, the dig and the bourbon bash was a success.
Saturday.
Pardon?
Saturday.
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 The burgers, yeah.
Saturday night. But that was, that was good to hear. And our next meeting will be a village board public hearing on December fourth, followed the next night, December fifth, with our workshop. December fourteenth will be our next village board meeting, and December twenty-eighth will be the last one of the year. We are, we have been asked to meet with the town board to discuss the sewer treatment plant reports, the one that came to the town in terms of the upgrades needed for their sewage treatment plant and the report that came to the village for the upgrades for the village. One of the things that the town has asked us to consider, and one of the things that if you have been able to look at and that is available to look at, our sewer wastewater treatment plant report, was we looked at the needs that we have in order to be operable and to provide service through, I believe it's around two thousand and forty. We had a projection out that far and the cost that were involved with it. And we also included in that a sort of an overview study of what it would cost for the village to send our waste to the town and also an alternative of sending our waste to Monroe County Pure Waters. So that is something that we are going to be having a discussion with the town about. I believe that as I sat at the workshop that the town invited us to, when they presented their water treatment plant study, the village and what would be needed if the village were to send our sewage to the town, was really not studied at the time, I believe. So we are interested in hearing and having a fact finder. The town has asked their consultant engineers to attend the workshop. And I have put out invitation to Clement Chung, our engineer and developer, to attend the workshop. If Clement is available on December fifth, then we will be meeting here with the town board that evening in part to have a, to have a discussion back and forth with them and with the engineers, just as sort of a fact finder regarding the possibilities that are there. Been asked by the supervisor and the town board to do that, and I think it's something that we need to be open to and listen to and have a conversation with them. So it does depend on whether Clement gets back to me and whether he's available. If not, then it will be moved to January, but we will have a discussion. Okay? We'll keep doing forward.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. You just reminded me of one thing, and I know it was on one agenda that I believe we got it just before the meeting. There was a standard service agreement with the Bella for engineering services that they would, you know, operate under that standard services agreement, but if there was any particular items or things that we needed them to work on or look at, you could write a quote ahead of time, then we could, you know, authorize the work to be done. And I don't believe we ever, you know, the board ever got their authorization, assigned that standard services agreement or to take any action on it. I think it's just fallen off, but just reminded me.
I remember seeing it, but it did not come before the board had a word.
Yeah, I think it was, I think it came like that afternoon before meeting, we mentioned it, said, are you gonna get this, get this on the agenda? So that may be something that may help his availability on the bit.
Jake, if you can find that document, if you would, and I'll look for it as well, back to emails. Sure that it's somewhere there. If you find it, pass it to me, and I will then include comment on it to Clement. I think that we, I think we have all seen it, because it was something that had come to us. I think we are within with it, it's just that we didn't ask for it. So without having it in front of us, I don't think we can do that right now, but we did have a consensus that we would like to do that. He is knowledgeable on our, on our sewer, you know, system and what is needed, so. And I think he, he also made that proposal, didn't he? He said, yes, I would be willing to do that, and here are the conditions for it, so. I will, I will have a, if you can pass that on to me, I don't find it first, I'll talk to you.
We just found it, so it's coming your way in a second.
I don't have black hole in it.
No. Something's going off in your pocket.
Anything else? Nope. All right. In that particular case, I think that it is nine fifteen. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you for coming. Back December fourth for our public communication. Back December 4th for our public communication.